All right, good evening, everybody. Welcome to Miami Regionals Downtown Hamilton. My name is Sarah Whiteis Chepitu and I am our Director for the Center for Civic Engagement here on the Hamilton campus. I am delighted to welcome you to our Meet the Candidates event here. The office tonight that we're featuring is the Butler County Commissioner. And so for us here at Miami University, especially for the Center for Civic Engagement, we feel a responsibility to our community to be able to provide opportunities for you to learn from your candidates so you can go to the polls on May 8th in our primary election fully informed. Tonight, we serve to provide you with the information you need to vote in our May 8th primary. For this special edition of our Meet the Candidates series, we focus on the office of Butler County Commissioner. All three candidates running for Commissioner were invited tonight, but Dr. Dora Bronston, who's running unopposed in the Democratic primary, had a previous engagement. So you will have an opportunity to hear from two of the three candidates on the ballot, specifically two Republican candidates, Cindy Carpenter and Lee Wong. Our purpose here tonight is for you to learn more about your candidates and put a face with a name on your ballot. Our structure for tonight, tonight we hope to cover a range of topics. First by our moderators, then with audience questions. Our moderators tonight are Dr. John Foran from the Department of Justice and Community Studies at Miami Regionals and Politics Reporter Mike Pittman from the Journal News are our moderators this evening. Candidates will give opening statements and closing statements. And then giving the taping here at TV Hamilton, we ask that you write out your questions. You all got note cards. And so if you have note cards with questions on them, be sure to write them at any time in the evening. If you can just lift those up and raise them, I'll come and get them from you and slide them over here to the moderators. After the moderators have finished with their slate of questions for the candidates, we'll take those note card questions from the audience with the remaining time allotted. Given our short time together this evening, we need to keep our questions at 30 seconds or less, so please write your question down and note which candidate you would like to respond. So please raise your card at any time and I'll come and get that from you. Given our time constraints this evening, we'll not be able to read all of our audience questions, so we provided coffee and cookies in the back and we hope that afterwards you will stay and mingle with our candidates. That's sort of the most powerful part of our evening tonight. So a couple of reminders for you, if you could, put your cell phones on silent. Two, if you've not been to the Downtown Center before, we do have restrooms around the corner. You want to make sure you take a key and also lock it from the inside when you go in. So we want to make sure you do that. So tonight in our evening, to get us started, so I will open the floor. For each candidate, we'll have two minutes for opening statements and then our moderators will start with our questions for this evening. Our first candidate for our opening statements is Cindy Carpenter.
Good evening. Thank you for coming out tonight to hear about the issues that are important to Butler County. I'm Commissioner Cindy Carpenter and I'm running for reelection. I'm ex- Okay. Thank you. Good evening. I'm Commissioner Cindy Carpenter and I'm running for reelection. I'm excited to tell you about the successes of Butler County government, where we've been and where we're going. I think this is the best Board of Commissioners the county has ever seen. Each member cares about the county, has deep roots, and a strong commitment to making Butler County a great place to live. I want you to be as proud of Butler County as I am. Most impressively, we have the fastest growing job rate in the state of Ohio. We're creating jobs and bringing in new ones with over 2,000 new and retained jobs last year alone. Our location and trained workforce are very important, but the intelligent use of the county's economic development resources has lit the match for the explosion of job growth, growth that's happening in every area of the county. With our Department of Development team onsite daily during the building of the Liberty Center, the project was able to be completed in nine months. We cut the red tape and we got the job done. Equally impressive is the financial management of the county. I came into office determined to do something about the runaway debt that had been crippling the county. The commissioners have been making drastic mid-year cuts and layoffs and mandatory furloughs were happening daily. I'm proud to say that since my election, the debt of nearly $100 million will soon be paid off. That means zero debt. It's unheard of. In addition, we've accumulated millions in cash reserves. That means we can now weather many storms without borrowing money. I promise you that our annual budget of $430 million is soundly managed. Taxes are always a subject of great interest during a campaign. I know I keep repeating myself, but I'm proud of what we've done. The commissioners have kept Butler County's sales tax rate down, making it the lowest sales tax rate in the state of Ohio. We rolled back the solid waste tax, reduced water and sewer rates, and have kept tax levies at bay. I've kept my promise to reduce taxes and my promise of no new taxes. I will continue to keep these promises in the future. Thank you.
Yes. Good evening. Thank you for coming. My parents were from China and we immigrated to British born here in Southeast Asia. At the age of 12 years old, my parents passed away from the stress of migration. At 1:00 PM on May 1st, 1971, in Chicago, something amazing and life-changing happened to me. I took my first step onto American soil. I was only 19 years old and arrived legally with only a suitcase, the shirt on my back, and no money. Although my pockets were empty, I was bursting with joy over the prospect of becoming an American. To me, America then and now could be summed up in two words, unlimited opportunity. While I may be an Asian by birth, I'm an American by choice. I am running for the Butler County Commissioner because I love this community with a soldier's passion. Uh, excuse, I missed. I felt then and I felt now that our country is the hope of the world. I dream up being part of the American family and I work hard to earn it. I got my citizenship and proudly served my country for 20 years in the U.S. Army. For the past 12 years, I have the honor to serve Westchester Township Trustee as Township Trustee. I am running for Butler County Commissioner because I love this community with a soldier's passion. After serving 20 years in the U.S. Army and 12 years as Westchester Township Trustee, I am prepared to bring my experience to serve Butler County. I want to bring the success of Westchester to Butler County. As a Township Trustee, I have worked hard to make sure that residents of Westchester are connected to, involved in, and informed about the work of our township. I work with, talk, bike, sit, and laugh with my fellow residents every day, all the people of all backgrounds. I chat out of front porches and sit in the backyards and connect with people daily. I'm a practitioner of shoe leather politics. Two minutes go by fast.
Well, we're not going to be as constrained with our questions and answers. We're not going to have a time limit. We'll probably cut off when it gets a little long, but it's going to be more of a conversation. But the first question we have is for Lee. You talked about how you wanted to bring the success of Westchester to Butler County and you've been prepared to do this. Talk a little bit about why you decided to run for Commissioner just after you were elected Westchester Township Trustee.
I have been a trustee for 12 years now. You know, you just don't come in politics and the government jumping at the high level, which is Butler County Commissioner, considered a high level. I've been in saying undergraduate for 12 years as a Township Trustee. I work hard. I learn my way through about government. You know, and it is, it is very common today, very common for a candidate, for any elected official, to run for a higher office. Like I say, I've been there for 12-plus years and I'm doing a very good job in Westchester, which we bring in over 3,600 businesses. And the success, Westchester has been named by Money Magazine as best places to live in America, and I intend to do the same for Butler County. We have world-class hospital. We are the number-two job getter center, which is just behind Cincinnati in Southwest region. And I can, I believe I can do the same for Butler County. Westchester unemployment rate is 1.7%. Butler County is about 4.2%. We attend a highest bond rating, which is AAA bond rating due to some fiscal responsibility. As Commissioner, I can identify businesses that were fine. What Butler County has, that is a necessary part of their business, such as, i.e., the multitude of machine shops that are an integral part in many manufacturing operations. I would approach those businesses directly with a program demonstrating the advantages that a Butler County-based operation has to offer, such as our access to three major highways, one of which is I-75, the major north-south highway in the country. Our plentiful water, easy access to two world-class airports, the local universities, UC Miami, Xavier, Dayton, Wright State, OSU, that produce our finest engineers, computers, experts, and scientists in the world, and our own local Butler County Regional Airport supporting industries in the tri-state region.
All right, thank you. Let me ask a similar question to Ms. Carpenter. In your opening statement, you talked about your record in office. So why, why do you want another term? What will be your top priorities? What do you see as the big challenges that need to be addressed in a next term? Why, yeah, why do you want to do the job?
And that's a great question. But given the way that the Republican Party politics work in Butler County, a better question is to ask Mr. Wong why he decided to run against me. I have been a sitting Commissioner. I have been doing an excellent job. We want to continue doing this job in the future. We have really incredible opportunities now that the debt is paid off. Westchester is sitting there with $32 million in debt, so, and perhaps Lee should thank me for the $83 million of roads that the county furnished for Westchester to have that explosion in business. So we do support our townships. We're going to continue to support our townships, and I, and I truly fail to understand what it is that, that Lee thinks has been going wrong with county government.
Oh, yes, thank you. May I answer to that? Well, let's ask Middletown, city of Middletown, how well they're doing. As Hamilton, you get down to it, there are a lot of brokenness, a lot of empty space, warehouses. Where are the jobs that bring in high-dollar? Liberty Center, that's a low-paid job, low-paying jobs. We cannot sustain that. And you are saying that you are doing so well in the county. Well, I did some checking. For the sake of paying down debt, the county has, has fallen behind in payment to Lakota School, lack of financial, holding all this money for general funds. You are not paying, Lakota, I went to check, they said that they were so far behind in debt that they literally could not even close a book. They could not, because the county do not want to pay them until the last minute, they have to deliver the checks.
Okay, let me, let me steer us back to the, we have two questions on the table, I suppose. So let me, let me sort of redirect the question and get, so what would be your top priority in, in a new term? And, yeah, why, why did, answering that question, I guess, why did you choose to run specifically when you did, I suppose?
I would say specifically against me.
Yeah, but-
Because two years ago, two other commissioners were up for reelection who had no opponents. He had an opportunity two years ago when he had the same feelings about having, you know, now gained experience in Butler County. Now, I just want to make a comment that the Auditor's Office issues those checks, does not come from the County Commissioner's Office. We were not, the Auditor's Office issues those checks, not the County Commissioner's Office.
No, I checked. Commissioner has the authority to hold on to the check. So, may I answer the questions?
Yeah, then we'll answer the questions real quick, then we'll move on to the next topic, because we've got a lot of questions we want to get to.
It's a, it's a really exciting future. I think we're going to continue to put in place programs and processes that make it accountable in the future, long after Commissioner Dixon, Commissioner Rogers, and myself are gone. We have completely restructured children's services. We're beginning to tackle job and family services. As you know, that's Medicaid, food stamps, cash assistance. We have a very well-organized fraud unit there, but, you know, you constantly have to swing around, make sure everything's current, that we're employing the best technology. So, so that's something we intend to tackle in the future. Our Department of Development just keeps growing. We're, we're in this explosion of, of job growth and business growth in the I-75 corridor. So the county is leading the way and partnering with our various townships to make sure that they move in the direction they want to move in.
All right, Lee, real quick.
There is, there is, you know, year after year, you were, you came from clerk of courts and then appointed again to Commissioner, and then you run for a term and you won, and you are for reelection. Now, year after year, this happens. You know, and, and then you were endorsed by your fellow politicians before I even had the opportunity to file. About, there is no change in the county. It's just status quo, everything the same. I think people are tired of this. They want some new breath, a new person in the Commissioner.
Okay, we'll, we'll leave it as, as that so we can move on. We want to get to some policy issues. One of the biggest issues coming up is the election machines, the voting machines. I know we've talked about it in the past, was considered by the state. Last year, there was some state legislation being discussed right now in the General Assembly. Well, we'll start with Ms. Carpenter. Where do you see the Butler County's role in getting new voter equipment for elections?
We've had these meetings with our state legislators, and we are very interested in getting the new equipment. We have tracked the lifespan of our existing equipment and are comfortable that we will get through this election. Had IT teams and so on out there making sure that, that it's going to work and hold us through. We are waiting for the Secretary of State's office to come up with their proposal and are hopeful that all 88 counties will put in a uniform system. We think that makes sense. That'll allow us to have cost savings when we purchase for 88 counties at the same time. So with the rainy day fund, we've set aside $8 million in addition to the $40 million cash on hand. We are planning to replace those machines.
Can I just ask a follow-up here?
Sure.
Are you pleased with what has happened at the state level with respect to this issue and the, the aging equipment statewide? Because it is essentially, it's partially a state issue, it's partially a county issue. Have you been happy with the level of support that the state has provided to the counties over this? Or would you like more?
Well, we're happy, we're happy that the state is now looking at it, because in years past, they've not. It's simply just been a county issue. Counties had to deal with it. At least now, they're engaged. So any part that the state picks up of the new voting machines will be something the county does not have to pick up. And I really trust our, our legislators to fight for us on that.
Lee?
Well, as a Township Trustee, I do not deal with that. But as a Commissioner, you are really what is mandated by the state legislature, what they want us to do. So as a Commissioner, I will make sure that the money is spent wisely, pick the best technology that's not going to cause us, you know, to replace it or new program, and I will make sure that the taxpayers' money are spent wisely.
All right, thank you. Let me shift us a little bit toward infrastructure and some of the growth that we've already talked about a little bit. So we, we are experiencing pretty rapid growth in Butler County, and it's somewhat uneven in the sense that around the I-75 corridor, it's booming, Liberty Township, Westchester Township. And, and this is something I hear from students a lot in class, that sort of the, the different levels of government, and they're not entirely sure of what level of government is responsible for what. So in that context, could each of you talk a little bit about what you think the, the role of the county commissioners ought to be in encouraging growth or sustaining growth or managing it in some way? And maybe Mr. Wong, you can go first?
Well, I would say that foremost, I'm elected by the people to work for the people, for the voters who pay my salary as a Commissioner. To me, county, there is a lack of county-wide developmental plan. I don't see one out there, because they are just want to pay down the debt, such as currently this Spooky Nook. That was a hundred million dollar, over a hundred million dollar project. I see that the county only committed to 2 point, about 2.5 million. That is really not enough to help a business to get started. It is very difficult to do business in Butler County. I hear that over and over again from businesses that come into our, our county. Now, I have, in Westchester, I would say that from my experience, we always help business to get started and then we stay aside. Let them, let them do what they have to do. But I always find out that at the county level, it is so difficult to get any permits, all kinds of red tape, and it is extremely difficult. Just last week, I'll tell you, the ambassador from China was in Miami University, and I did not see one Commissioner Cindy up there to meet him. As a trustee, I even met the ambassador, the general counsel from China, networking. I just did not have the authority to do business, such as given incentive to come in.
All right, thank you. Ms. Carpenter?
The commissioners don't own property. We're not a city or a township. We are a branch of the state. There are 88 branches of the state. That's county government. The state legislature defines our role, such as administration of children's services, administration of job and family services, and that's our primary duty is to provide those services. So where we get involved in economic development is at the request of the different townships or the different political entities that are asking us. So we are involved where we can, bringing our economic development tools like tax increment financing districts or the Port Authority, which will waive the sales tax for, for the materials to build a building. It is not the same governmental structure as a township. So with regard to Spooky Nook, the county does not jump in first to give money to a city project. We never have. We, we watch it play out. We put, we make everybody else get in the game and see what they're, they're willing to put up for it before we risk our county dollars in a project that may or may not be fully supported. And if you recall, the commissioners have been looking at putting a bridge in which connects either north or south of the Black Street Bridge to allow for traffic to flow to the western side of our county. So we're not negligent in looking at these big projects, but there's only a specific slice of them that we can affect.
May I say that the county has a lack of compliance with development agreements? As I said before, Liberty Center late payment in 2017, and lack of full payment in 2018. They don't make this payment, the bank can default on the center. A school district compensation compliance, Butler County TID payments. You know, as a citizen, if I do not make my payment, my credit go down, I could even be arrested. As a government, we are not doing that. I think that is wrong.
Cindy, real quick, if you want to respond?
Uh, yes. The commissioners do the budgeting on paper. We do never handle funds directly. That goes directly into the Auditor's Office. The auditor holds all of the contracts for any contract in, in the, in the county, including what's been accrued for tax levy dollars for Lakota or wherever, and then the Auditor's Office pays those, pays those bills and distributes those funds as they see fit. We do not have any involvement in the payment of any, any debt or funds.
Kind of staying on infrastructure, kind of related to what we were just talking about here, but we're going to see a lot of growth on the I-75 corridor. It's kind of a two-part question here. Where do you see the commissioner's role in that with the I-75 corridor, especially with Liberty Township, with the new Cox Extension just getting underway with Christ Hospital over there? But also, what about on the eastern side of the county, over in Ross? There's not a lot of talk about development over there. It's more focused on the eastern side, but the western side's got a lot of potential too. So I think we are still on, we'll go Cindy on this and then back to Lee.
One thing that, that we do play a big role in is workforce development. So our Ohio Means Jobs administers the workforce development programs on behalf of the state. We go to great lengths to identify what the employers are seeking in terms of job seekers and working with our colleges, our high schools, career programs to make sure that we are training our students to be job-ready and keep those jobs in Butler County. So workforce development is something that is very, very important and something that the county is actively participating in.
I want to say that just in a township alone, we send out my, my employees' people development to Las Vegas to go outside to fish, to bring in businesses. Ready Cincinnati, we are in the, we got the first bite, because that's how proactive we are. And then I even try, myself, travel to China on my own, just to, to build networks, to bring business here. And that this county, we have not been bringing jobs in from outside, maybe poaching from Westchester to another part of the city.
But real, real quick, just, we have an audience question I want to throw in, because it's kind of related to this. And we'll start with Mr. Wong first on this. What specific opportunities are there for these high-paying jobs that you see? Could you describe where those high-paying jobs could be, what industries we need to attract to get those? And then Cindy can respond as well.
Well, manufacturing. We, in Westchester, we brought in GE, PNG autos. But I think they are already, just look around, in Butler County alone, in Middletown, there are warehouse, empty warehouse, or empty office building over here. Those need to be, use the money to help them to, to clean it out and attract new business to bring them in, such as assembly for any gun manufacturing or any kind of business from outside that comes in. And we have the skill here. And that, about job partnering here, I think Butler County has done a poor job in, in partnering with existing programs that strengthens the workforce. We have a few here, it's good, Butler Tech, but we did not use a, like, job course, the Union Apprentice Program. These are all very good. And that, and that as a Commissioner of the county, we could provide transportation to send these folks to get trained, all these apprentice programs.
Cindy, same question.
We do provide transportation for the training programs that we fund through Ohio Means Jobs. The important, the high-paying jobs, I believe, are coming to Butler County will be in biomed, advanced manufacturing, some of our sporting events with the Visitors Bureau, healthcare, and we do have success with bringing corporate headquarters here. We partner often with Miami University and our county government. Miami provided the lean training to all of our directors and many of our managers so that we could study the principles to, to cut out bureaucracy and make our processes leaner and more efficient. So I would say that Butler County does partner well with the Miami and other educators.
Okay, and we will move on to another topic, but I do, I have a more general philosophical question, I guess. So both of you have discussed in, in different ways how government can partner with, with private organizations or, or business to bring in jobs. More, more generally, let me ask you this. What is, what is your basic philosophy or basic view on when it's appropriate for government to intervene like that, to bring jobs in? Because, I mean, presumably, there are lots of, lots of industries, lots of potential jobs that are out there who would like government support, so you kind of have to pick and choose. Like, how, how do you decide that, that biotech is, is worthy of support, something else is not worthy of support? I just, generally, and really for both people.
Commissioners have the direct authority to give this incentive, to bring this, attract this business coming to our county, such as, there is a fund, I forgot what it was, for all the, all this blighted area that federal government provides. We can use those to tear it down inside, clean it up, bring in new business.
But how do you decide what is a desirable business and, or a non, or an undesirable business, I guess is my question?
Well, our business zoning enterprise, we have committees who look into that to see what- what kind, actually find out what salary they're going to pay to their employee, how much they're going to invest in our community, and then we will decide what kind of tax incentive packet we'll give it to them.
Cindy?
We have cities, villages, townships in Butler County. Again, they have the geographical area and the commissioners provide services. So what we do now is we help each of our entities if they ask us for help. We don't determine what these unique communities will have. We won't work to bring jobs to a community unless we're asked to help. And we do stay in touch with our community leaders, but we follow their vision and help them to achieve what their residents are looking for.
So these communities are saying they have biomed and some of these other industries that you were mentioning?
And then can you help us with the TIF? Can you help us with figuring out how to issue debt? Can you talk to the school district? And in each and every case where we have incentives available, this Board of Commissioners tries to make the school districts whole. We do not waive the school district tax.
I must say that, interject here, twelve years as trustee, I never seen Commissioner Cindy out in the community to talk about that, what she just talked. If I'm a commissioner, I will be out there every day to meet this, for business, talk to people.
Just real quick, we got another audience question, kind of appropriate for the conversation that we're, the topic that we're discussing now. What are the plans to address some of these multiple abandoned properties that we're seeing, the foreclosures and so forth? And do you see, I mean, and, with aging blight and on the landscape, especially Hamilton and Middletown, how do you address it? And we'll start with, I think we need to start with Cindy now. I've lost track of who we started with, so we'll start with Cindy now.
We do have a land bank in Butler County. Each of the commissioners has a member. We do look at those projects, address them, fund the demolition of buildings. That is done, they meet monthly, and you can read the minutes.
Lee?
Yes. The land bank project, those are very important. Places like Hamilton, Middletown, all those cities, they are not doing so well. They are eligible for it, and depends on what condition it is. Westchester do not get much in it. So I think those are wonderful vehicle to spur economic growth.
Now, moving on to gun control, we've seen in the news recently, Madison Township, or Madison Local Schools, their school board voted to allow teachers and staff, provided they have a CCW permit, to carry in school. Monroe, they're considering council members being allowed to, as long as they have their CCW, to be able to carry during council meetings. What is your thought on this? Would you support something like this at a county commission? Would you encourage other cities or townships and school districts to do this? And we'll start with Lee.
I wanted to tell you, my background is in law enforcement. I was Army CID Special Agent. You know, as a detective, I used to protect Mr. Weinberger, or the four-star general. We have to be trained. Every two months, have to be qualified with our sidearms, our weapon. Now, it's very easy to say that, oh, yes, I want to carry a gun. The best protection is your own protection. Carry a gun. Right now, if there's a shooter coming in here, if I pull out a gun, if not trained properly, you are going to catch in the crossfire, those of you sitting right here. Chances are, I may miss that person that's sitting, that saw the shooter in front of me due to all the adrenaline, excitement. I'm going to miss it. Will kill somebody. As a commissioner, I think, from my experience, I prefer police presence in the room, who has authority, who is trained, who is technically trained, and they can respond instantly. I would definitely want police presence instead of someone who would just go out to take a course and carry weapon and start a shooting.
Cindy?
I have to agree with Lee's comments. I would support the school districts anyway they decide to go on this issue. It's not something that the commissioners should govern. But in the Board of Commissioners hearing room, in the Government Services Center Building, we are protected by the Butler County Sheriff's Department, and I'm very satisfied with that.
All right. We have a question about the airport, actually, the regional airport. And as things stand, the county or local government is basically in the airport business. Do you think that's an appropriate role for local government? Would you change? Are you satisfied with the arrangement that's currently in existence for the governing of the regional airport?
The regional airports, for years, has been trying to get up to, it was not run properly, and we are always in debt, and that they have asked the township to contribute to help them get up to speed. Regional airport is very important, and Butler County Regional Airport has only one of the three guidance system. One is in Cincinnati, I think Wilmington, and Butler County. And that is an integral part of doing business for cooperation, AKSDU, veneer, this Volker, they're flying and out all the time. And with an airport here, I think our government needs to be, is under direct control of commissioner, and that is also under special port authority, that you can do a lot of business, designate a special zone for business coming in from overseas.
And you support that?
Yes.
Contact. Okay. Thank you.
Currently, we are continuing to look at the airport to determine if we do have some of the right practices in place. I think that that is, that's going to continue, and we're going to come up with a long-term airport plan.
Now, opioids, heroin, it's a big issue. We've seen in some, many communities, methamphetamines are making a comeback as far as the drug problem. It's killed more people year over year in Butler County. Per the Butler County quarter, they're seeing a big increase. What's the plan to deal with the opioid issue? I mean, how, I mean, how do we get a hold of this? No one seems to know the plan, so we'll start with Cindy.
I think in government, we should stay in our own lane. Yes, there's a lot of things that can be done for a lot of people, but I think we should only intercede in the opioid issue as it relates to county government. I am the commissioner's representative on the opiate task force. I'm very proud of the Mamas program, which I initiated two years ago. Opiate-addicted mothers, expectant mothers can now go to a residential program for thirty days and then leave there for recovery housing, where they learn life skills, they learn job training, and basic skills like budgeting and how to manage a household. So right now, there are, there have been many babies born drug-free because of this program, and many mothers are on a path towards independence. We also have programs in our county care facility, because some of the aging individuals have had decades of drug abuse, and it's a new field to see how that affects the elderly. We deal with the mentally ill and users as they come into the jail system. So that is a program I'm involved in, where we assess, we professionally assess what's going on with the person as they're being booked and put them into the right kind of treatment program, which may or may not be in the jail.
I was, I retired from the county probation office. Yeah, we deal with all the drug problems, drug addicts. You know, we send them to jail, clean them up, and then thirty days later come out, wow, they're all hyped to go out, find jobs, all this and that. It's not a good paying job. The root cause of the problem is jobs. If you don't have a good job, good paying jobs, they're going to fall right back to it. No program out there, or a silver bullet, can be successful. In probation, we say that if it is thirty percent successful, that program, that's a good program. There is a very high rate of recidivism. And that, to me, as a commissioner, job is a number-one priority to bring in here.
Okay. Just, we have a, actually specifically for Mr. Wong here, since we're on jobs, the audience question was, what specific jobs did you bring to Westchester Township? Now, I know government doesn't really create jobs, but can you talk about a specific project that you were key on, that you helped attract to Westchester?
Well, as government, we create an ambience, good infrastructure, good support amenities to attract them, to come into our township. We go outside to hunt for this kind of company. Jobs, they call site-in-selection.
Was there any specific role that you played to attract a specific company?
Yes, we, specific roles, well, we try to help them to apply for permits, give them a chart, to guide them, what stage they could go, how to help them to get it. As far as we go out to get specific jobs, I don't think I can claim credit for that. I would say that, hey, I will meet with a leader and invite him to come here to our township, to see what is light, what kind of site, what kind of facility, police fire, what kind of amenities we have to attract them, and school system. That's very important.
And then just to follow up on this for Mrs. Carpenter, same person asking the question, what do you consider the biggest strength of Butler County, biggest asset?
Oh, I think the biggest asset is our communities. We're diverse. We have something from everybody, for everybody. We're located between Cincinnati and Dayton. If you want to be in the urban renaissance, you can go to Middletown or Hamilton, where I think they're doing fabulous, and the way that the cities are progressing, and really, you know, just exploding with the arts and all the exciting things that are coming here. That's a good place to go if you're interested in urban living. You've got the most beautiful countryside, horse farms and things around if you're interested in being in a rural area, and you do have suburbs in Westchester and Liberty Township in Fairfield. So I think the diversity of our attractions, our amenities, our people, our school districts is what makes us so special.
Thank you. Okay. This is from the audience as well, and this is to both of you. Both of you have considerable records of public service, and you've talked about your successes in office. So what, could you name one specific policy or idea or initiative that you were disappointed in not being able to do, to accomplish? What's been your biggest disappointment in office, or frustration, or failure?
I would say the Miami-to-Miami trial, the connection through Westchester. I just could not get the other two trustee to buy into it. They felt that this is, they have a philosophy not to spend federal government money, when this money is already allocated to OKI for communities to build bypass infrastructure, and we are not doing it. And that is my biggest disappointment. For the last four years, we did not build one inch of bypass.
The commissioners appropriate the budget. We appoint to boards and commissions, and a little-known fact, we own all of the property in Butler County. So that's a half a billion dollars worth of property, buildings, facilities, trucks, desks, everything. So I wish that we had moved forward with the facility plan in order to reduce our footprint in some of the buildings where maybe we're not using all the space, so that's my biggest regret right now. Although I still have the folder on my desk. I haven't given up yet.
All right. Moving on, we have another question here. This is for both. What are the responsibilities of a commissioner, core competencies and qualifications for a commissioner in this position, for both candidates here? We'll go with Mrs. Carpenter first.
I think that, as I said before, our basic duties are to budget and appropriate for the various offices, departments, and agencies. And in order to do that in the budget meetings, I think you have to know what's going on there, so you can ask them the tough questions. One thing that I notice in budget hearings is departments will come in who have hired lawyers, and the range is from forty thousand dollars a year to a hundred and ten thousand dollars a year. So sort of knowing what goes on and what the duties are in the individual offices is something that's benefited us greatly as we've pared down the budgets and made better decisions on hiring and giving raises and that sort of thing.
I think, like I said before, first and foremost, I'm working for the people, the people that elected me, and I'm, as I say, I'm a shoe-leather politician. I will go out to work for the people. I hear the voice, what they need. I know that commissioner is, job is mainly mandated by the state legislature, such as some of the programs. We have family services that must be provided, social service.
All right. Moving on to a tax question here. We've talked a little bit about taxes and tax increment financing, but I want to go to the JEDs, Joint Economic Development District, for those who don't know what that is. Butler County's been involved with a couple of these. Hamilton is with these. Fairfield Township just did one with Hamilton. Actually, I think that's the third one. What do you see as the role for the county with these JEDs, and how can you help, I mean, what's the benefit of it? Why do them? So we'll go with Mr. Wong first.
JED is a wonderful vehicle. Westchester have been using it for the GE project. They brought in high-paid employees, over a hundred thousand average, and that we tax them one percent. That one percent, because we partner with, using the authority of Fairfield, city of Fairfield, and we pay them just a little percentage of that. From that one percent, we collected over a million dollar a year. That helped us tremendously building infrastructures, sidewalk around the, connect them to streets of Westchester. That was in agreement on that part JED. And provided that, we want to make sure that, as a commissioner, that, make sure that it is not annexed when they do that by a city.
Cindy?
I think that the JEDs are very important as we move forward in our progress in Butler County and build bridges and get better infrastructure onto the western part of the county. I think those will be used intelligently by the cities and townships in collecting the tax. They can support the infrastructure, and from there, you know, hopefully, the western side of the county will explode and move in the direction they choose to go in. So I think we'll see more of those applied to development as it comes to the western side of the county following Spooky Nook.
Is there any specific areas that you think that could be the next JED area? I mean, Cindy, you want to go with that first?
I just think that Ross is going to have the next burst in development because of its location next to 27. So I believe that will be something we see grow very quickly. Also, I just don't think we can really know what the impact of Spooky Nook is going to be yet, because it's something we've never had here. We haven't seen. We're not like, I think it's Pennsylvania maybe where the other location is. We've got aging infrastructure in Hamilton. I mean, just changing B Street, it seems like, you know, a feat that may not be able to be accomplished. So I think, I expect that that area in Hamilton, moving over towards St. Clair Township, will also develop.
Lee, any areas that you think will be benefited?
Well, one part is really neglected is Middletown. I think that we could give them a lot of incentive. They could use a lot of help up in Middletown. Right now, Middletown is like a factory town. They need to bring in some high-paying jobs, and government can, commissioner can help them to set up special districts just for that.
Can I make a comment? Okay. I'm a little bit offended by Lee Wong's remarks that Middletown and Hamilton are not doing well, and that high-paying jobs are needed for them to succeed. This is a community that is of eighty percent Appalachian descent. We're proud of it. Everyone's not going to be able to have a high-paying job yet. They still may be a Middletown resident. Their little nineteen-thirties bungalows are cute, many of which are well-maintained. I have been to every area of the county. I have been in all those houses. I'm very proud of the renaissance that's happening in Middletown. I'm very proud of Cincinnati State. I'm very proud of every single area of Hamilton, and I've walked every single neighborhood. They're a proud people, hard-working people. They may be blue collar, they may be white color. They love their communities, and they choose... color, they love their communities and they choose to be there. So, you know, I, I support every community in Butler County.
Thank you. And this is our last question, is that right? So let, let me ask a sort of broader question to both of you. So with these kinds of, of debates or fora, we tend to focus on differences, we tend to focus on differentiations between the candidates. So we're having a primary, May 8th, and there will be one person who wins, one person who doesn't win. So let me ask each of you, do, could you say something positive about your opponent? And would you pledge to support your opponent if they turn out as the winner in the May 8th primary? Who would like to go first?
I very much appreciate Mr. Wong's service to our country, so I'm very thankful for that. And I do respect his pride in the township of Westchester. So I think that's something admirable also. And I would pledge to support him should he be elected in November.
Thank you.
Thank you. I, you know, I, as a township trustee, I want to bring success here. I want to learn more about our county. And I think I have the experience and know-how. And I appreciate Cindy Carpenter for all years of service at Clerk of Courts and Commissioner.
And you would support her if she wins the primary?
Yes, of course.
All right. And we hand it off to Sarah.
Okay, so now we're going to do closing statements for each. Mr. Wong, you'll get to go first.
Okay. How much time do I have?
One minute, isn't it?
Just one minute? Okay, I didn't finish earlier. Okay, as I tell you, if I'm a commissioner, I would, I would be the same as what I did the success in Westchester. I would go out to meet, talk, sit with the residents here, and see what their needs are, and bring it to the government. You know, that a lot of residents out there couldn't even call someone in the government to answer a question. I would be there. I would be out there to answer my constituents. As a commissioner, I would say that is my promise. And I will work hard for our community. And it should be someone who knows the community, who knows the constituents, the ideas and values are important to it. And I would be honored to be that person as your commissioner. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Cindy?
We are innovative. Butler County has never seen this kind of progress. Our business-like approach to governing, combined with out-of-the-box thinking and a refusal to do things the way they've always been done, is serving taxpayers well. And the future promises more of the same. I'm thankful to have had the overwhelming success of the voters in Butler County, and I look forward to leading Butler County to a new, exciting future. Thank you very much.
Wonderful. If we can give our candidates a round of applause for... And a big thank you to our moderators, Mike Pittman and John Forn, thank you so much for asking the questions on behalf of the audience this evening, we really appreciate it. Want to say thank you to TV Hamilton for live streaming and filming this evening, as well as John Vaughn for running our sound over there here as the downtown center. Thanks to you for coming to our voter education event. You can catch this on TV at TV Hamilton, as well as online. Just a reminder, early voting is happening now, the primary is on May 8th. Be sure to connect with your voter resources. Now comes the best part, so our candidates are going to stay and mingle. If you have questions that weren't asked here tonight and you'd like to connect with them, we do encourage you to come and meet your candidates. Thank you so much for joining us here tonight, we really appreciate it. Thank you.
Just real quick also, we have our Voters Guide for the Journal News, journal-news.com/voterguide. Voter Guide is all together and all lowercase. You can look for any of the races that, that are out there in Butler County.